Okay, and we were set, Mr. Chair.
All right, it is thirteen after seven on July twenty-fourth. This is the Maynard Public Hearing of the Zoning Board of Appeals. We have two or three items on the agenda tonight. And the first one is a chair election.
Yes.
So I'm wondering if anybody wants to volunteer to be a chair?
Oh, that's a good one.
I'm gonna raise my hand, but I'm not volunteering. I'm raising my hand to make a motion that we, I would nominate Paul to be chair again this year.
I would second that motion.
Oh, my goodness. Do we need to vote on that?
We do need to vote, Mr. Chair. That was a nomination by Jerry and a second by Brad.
Yes. And so of the members that we have here, Paige?
Yes.
Paige is a yes. Leslie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes. Yep, sorry, yes.
And Brad?
Yes.
And Jerry?
Yes.
I guess I'm stuck with it.
Congratulations.
All right.
Enjoy.
Thanks.
We have a vice chair. We should probably appoint Rob. We should select who would be.
All right, I'd nominate Paige to be the vice chair. Is that right? That's what we had last time?
I'll second it.
Go ahead.
Wow, this is a quick vote.
So I'll vote in the affirmative. Leslie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Paige, you can vote if you want, but you're in.
Thanks, everyone.
You're welcome.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the minutes from the June twenty-sixth meeting. I assume everybody's read that and we're ready to make comments, edits, or vote. So do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
John motions. Leslie, were you gonna second?
Yeah, sure. A second.
Do we have any comments on the minutes from last month? No comments. All right. To vote in the affirmative, Paige?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
And I'll vote in affirmative as well. So the minutes are approved from the last meeting. The next item on our agenda is a continuation of the special permit hearing for a renewal of a special permit filed by Andy Marlin and Donna Dotson, one twenty-three Summer Street, Maynard. The subject property at one twenty-three Summer Street is within an S-one zoning district consistent with sections three, two, five, and ten-two of the zoning bylaws petitioners requesting renewal of the special permit allowing a trade shop use per an artist studio within the subject property originally approved September eighth, twenty-twenty-two. Where we left this off last time, I had read the conditions of that special permit. We had some discussions, both speaking in favor and in opposition to the renewal. And the question came up of what kind of complaints violations were recorded on this existing special permit? We had Bill Nemser go through the town records, through the building commissioner and the police department, trying to find what kind of violations we had. And if I can find my notes on it, he found that there were four complaints. And of those four complaints, recorded either by Amy Schuh or Bill Schuh, the building commissioner noted that the shades were down, but not effective for light blocking. And that was two of them. A video of a minivan with a roof being loaded. There was no violation condition there. And a truck and moving activities don't appear to be violating conditions. Shades were drowned but ineffective for light blocking. And so while there were complaints, there were no violations issued by the building commissioner. In the police log, there were a variety of issues, some for trespassing. And there were no violations recorded by the police department. So that's, that's what we have found. Sorry, I've got so many documents open here. So that's done. So Bill, did you want to add anything to your research on the, on the, on the violations?
Well, we had, also I should introduce, we do have Brian Winter, who's town council tonight, is attending as well on behalf of the town, and Rick Asman, the building commissioner, is attending as well. We did find that there were violations or reports, complaints of that were filed from, both from last year and earlier, that were resubmitted in the current complaint form, format, which I've I believe we enclosed them. All right, I forwarded them to the board, so you've seen all those. I think it's pretty straight, straight up forward what we have. I did receive one other call personally of a report of of loading during the day of a of a vehicle. Time I was unable to go out there, building commissioner was unavailable for a little while. But in any event, we discussed it and it turns that the the report did not constitute a violation if in fact it did occur. I went over there probably an hour later, but I was now on this on the spot. And so that's about the only thing of interest, I would say.
So say that one again. You went there and
Yeah, I was, yes, I typically do not go to research a complaint and I wasn't and I was called by one of the abutters who was having trouble on the website and reaching anybody at Town Hall to report what they alleged was a violation. The violation was moving of artwork onto a vehicle.
During, during business hours?
Yes, probably at nine o'clock in the morning or so, yeah. I, it's documented in the, I don't remember the exact time, but I've documented it. The correspondence, we couldn't go, nobody was available to go out there for roughly an hour and and as I said, that didn't, we did discuss internally and it was determined that did not constitute a violation in any case. I was just, was out, so I drove by. That was all. I didn't see anything. And other than that, I believe the board has seen everything and that's really all I have.
Do any of the board members have questions of the petitioner? The applicant?
I think all the board cannot unmute themselves, I believe, let's say. And if you want to speak, board, and I think I've unmuted, I think I made it so you can control your own. But if not, raise your hand if you don't. Oh, Leslie's raising her hand.
May I speak?
Go ahead.
Oh, so I'm wondering if any of the abutters who are making complaints have security lights on at night?
Who are you asking?
Any of the abutters that have made complaints about the light coming from the barn. I thought that there was
I can just say that the, I immediately I would like to try to differentiate the difference between a business and a residence. So does, we keep learning the lines between, this is
Okay.
Leslie, you were asking a question?
Oh, whether any of the abutters who are making complaints about being able to see that the lights are on in the barn.
Right. Mr. Schuh has his
Daylight shining at night.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Schuh has his hand up. I will
Yep.
Is he gonna answer this question?
I don't know.
Yeah, I'm totally sorry. I messed that up. I thought that she was asking it open, as an open question to the abutters. I just, I was just saying that I don't personally have a security light on. But just the question in general really confuses things between it's a, it's a residence, so they have a security light. And we're trying to clarify whether or not a business is okay to have light. So it's not like we're worried about two people's lights being too bright or something like that. We're worried about a business operation.
But that's not her question.
Well, she asked if any of us had security lights.
And do you?
I do not.
Thank you. Any other questions? Paige?
I have a question for the applicant. I, we when we issued a decision on the original application, as everyone I think knows, we went out and we did some new pieces of tools or large sound generating equipment that have been purchased or regularly being used since that time.
I'm sorry, what was, what was the question, Paige? You were kind of cutting in and out.
I'm sorry. My internet connection isn't great today, but I was just wondering if there are any, if you'd purchased any new equipment or tools that are regularly being used since we did our last site visit and sound measurement.
Uh, no. And this is Donna Dotson, one-two-three Summer Street.
Any other questions of the board members to the applicant?
I don't see any, Mr. Chair.
So with that, we've heard from, from Bill about what complaints were filed with the town. We also have a note that Bill forwarded to the zoning board of a list of complaints by various people. And of those, if I can find them, if I can find that list. No, that's not it. There it is. Most of these complaints appeared to have happened back in December or October of last year. And my question of it's either Bill or Amy Schuh seems to have written most of them. And then Yvette had a few as well. What was done about these complaints? Who, who did you log them with? So who, who, we have a hand up. Bill, Bill?
Bill Schuh and Amy Schuh both have
All right, let's start with Bill.
Mr. Schuh, you should be able to speak now, I think it
He's on mute.
I'm choosing not to speak on this topic.
Okay, all right. Um, you, should I, I have Amy Schuh, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
I submitted some complaints about noise and the light. I submitted the noise complaints because they were videos that, that showed that you couldn't hear last time. And they were in December when this permit was being followed. So those have been, they were submitted so you could see them and hear the noise from our house, you know? And that was up in the front of our backyard to, you know, with another house in between. It was really loud, four-thirty in the afternoon, which is within the working hours, but it was, it was very loud. I, I also wanna, I submitted a quick email today and I really just, I don't know if you've got to see it, but it was about the complaints and the policing of the violations and the forms and it's just, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to talk about that, but I feel like
It's, it's, it's not really, Amy.
Okay.
I wanted to find out about the list. It was like a two or three-page list of complaints that somebody compiled. It was either you or Bill or Yvette.
Right.
And most of them seem to be more than six months old. There was a few from June of this year. And my question is what was resolved about those issues? Was the police on site? Was the building commissioner on site? How was they resolved?
So, so we submitted, we kept a log. Personally, I kept a log because I thought, I didn't think we were going to be going through this six months early. So when we had complaints, if, if there were emails sent to the building inspector or whoever, we never got any immediate response. So we just started keeping a log and then we were going to present that, but that was not obviously what you wanted. But also again, six months early, we were not prepared to, you know, and, and honestly, like when, when people are trying to renew a permit, they're not going to be as noisy as they are all the time either. So it's, it's been, it's, it's not a, we're not doing this to be difficult, you know, we really aren't. It's, it's truly, when, when you guys came and did the noise readings last July, you noted that it was really loud back behind our barn next to our garden. It was louder actually, in fact, back there than it was at, you know, one-nineteen Summer Street. So it's, it's still a bother, you know, and we see a lot of people support, but it's, we were right there and it's really, really tough. So we went the wrong route by keeping a log, I guess, but there, there's several things and without a working forum or anybody that can come out to see it, it's really, really difficult.
All right, all right. I appreciate your comment. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just for clarification, as we go forward, we, we're still, you're still in the public comment phase, correct?
That's right.
Okay. May I recommend that we, we, do you have a protocol that we want to run through because so we, we can keep things going efficiently? Or is there anything you feel you'd like to?
Well, I forgot to mention that the two-minute time limit. I'm sorry about that. But I'm just trying to get, I think this is the last item for public information for us is these lists of complaints rather than violations, because right now they're just complaints. So we're not a noted violation.
Right. Most of that, I believe, Mr. Chair, the bill, I have the building commissioner on as well, who, who did complete his analysis. If you'd like to hear from him, it might be, might speed things as well. If you, like, Rick Asman is on the line.
Rick, are you, are you available there?
Oh, I'm available. So, you know, the list of complaints that have been coming in rapid fire that appear to be retroactive back to last year or December, January are, I don't know that all of those were noticed to the Office of Municipal Services, but they were copied to Bill's office and to my office. And quite frankly, it's, it's really difficult to investigate a, a noise complaint that happens off hours from when we're in town. But it's also been made crystal clear by myself to anybody who wants to file a zoning complaint with my office that until this form system that we started recently was initiated, all complaints, zoning complaints to my office had to be in writing, hard copy to me. They didn't, they could be anonymous, but they had to be a written complaint and emails and phone calls do not constitute the reception of a complaint to be investigated. So I think that's, you know, I, I don't know to what degree Megan was involved with some of this before, but you know, that's, those are the two reasons these things weren't in, those things weren't investigated to any great degree. The biggest being, I don't know how to police noise when we're not in town and we're not there to hear. And even if we were in town to hear it, the town itself is not equipped to go out and measure noise. That's about it.
Thank you, Rick. So just, just to close the discussion on this noise, I would like to ask Donna and Andy if they have any comments on this noise issue that the shoes were making note of. Was there any extraneous machinery work that was done outside or with the door open or anything like that that would have caused them to make the complaint?
I thank you, Mr. Chair. No, the conditions are very clear that we are not doing any noise activity outside and we are not. We are complying with everything.
None even in the foyer or the storage area was one of the requests and we're adhering to that as well.
Okay. And the machinery is the same saws and so forth that we saw a year ago?
Yeah, lightweight electric hand tools.
All right. Thank you. So with that, is there any? Brad, go ahead.
Yes, I have a question for the applicants. Can you please state what your understanding is of the conditions of the of the permit about surrounding, associated with noise?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for the question. So we are confining all activities that create noise, meaning with our lightweight, you know, electrical hand tools to the interior of the studio only. So that's the insulated, um, you know, part of the studio that has, you know, the thermal pane windows and the most, the most confining restrictions.
I believe that's, that's not correct. I believe there is a restriction upon the sound as it travels to properties to the abutters or around. That, that correct is probably one of them is that there should be no discernible noise coming from the property?
Yeah, I think it says noise levels should be controlled to be minimally detectable outside the studio. So we have had a number of people come and evaluate the sound outside the studio and many have stood outside the studio and asked us to run various tools and they actually were running and they couldn't hear them.
And who, and who are these people?
Um, council and also a professional sound engineer.
Okay, but these were not the, these were not the neighbors. Because our, our board has been out there and we could hear the noise that, that was, that came from from your property where you're running, when you're running them inside the property, I mean, inside the envelope of the, of the, of your trade shop. So I'm, I'm just saying that there was certainly discernible noise and it appears that the neighbors and/or the abutters are complaining that, that that noise is certainly discernible.
So I believe when you were here for the site visit, we had the windows open and the fans running. So absolutely the sound was traveling.
No, we, no, that's, that's not correct because we had them shut and, and to do our, to do our testing. Or to do our, to do what we thought was a fair evaluation.
And, and also I think I mentioned this last time, but we have received emails from the abutters saying that they can hear noises when, again, I've been in the house and no one has been in the barn.
Okay. I also, today I also saw a a message or a note that was part of the complaint saying that there was chainsaw noise going on at twenty-two forty-eight, which is close to eleven o'clock at night. And that was coming from your property. And there was also one where there was a pickup that was going on of somewhere around five o'clock in the morning. I don't have the exact time. So you're doing a pickup of artwork where there was a truck in your, in your yard during that. I'm just wondering what you had to say about that.
No, not, neither of those false statements is true.
Okay. But they, but the, but the shoes seem to have it documented. And I'm guessing that they probably have something where they woke up because they heard that noise. And then they looked out and saw what was going on and they may, they may even have video documentation. I don't, I don't know.
Brad, make sure you stick to the facts.
So what you're saying is, you're saying that no that, that you did not have chainsaw noises going on at closer between ten and eleven o'clock at night. And you did not have any pickups going on at five o'clock or around the hour of five o'clock in the morning?
Absolutely not.
No.
Absolutely not.
Okay, well, thank you.
We respect the conditions. We respect the work of the board. We respect the work of the town.
We respect our neighbors. We respect our town. Brad, I'm sorry, but this is uncomfortable.
It's simply not true. Those are not true statements.
Just a reminder, Mr. Chair, if something like that was to happen in the middle of the night, it's something, that's something where the police department is notified and report would be made. And that would be easily verified by a police report.
That's, that's true. Thank you. So any other questions from board members? I'm not seeing any hand waving, no comments. So with that, I would like to close the public comment period of this hearing. Now, do I do a vote on that or do I just close it because I have all that power of being voted in as chairman again?
I'll, I'll defer to attorney winner, but I believe the chair's prerogative is to close the public comment portion, but I'll defer to
Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to respond to that if you'd like me to.
Sure.
And I know you can all see my name, but Brian Winter from Town Council's office, me, Tallerman and Costa. Closing the public comment period is just a portion of the public hearing. And it's your meeting, Mr. Chairman. One of the, one of the benefits of being the chair is how the public hearing is going to be conducted. Later on, when you determine that it's time to close the hearing in its entirety, I would take a motion and a vote on that. But how you segment the, the process of the hearing, that's up to you, sir. And so you can end public comment and return the matter to the board for its discussions and keep it at the table if that's your will, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Always like to get some encouragement. So board members, we need to discuss their application for a permit renewal for another year. And this would be effective on the expiration date of the existing special permit.
And I believe, Mr. Chair, excuse me, are you closing, just for my, I'm keeping the minutes, are you closing the public input?
Public comments, yes.
Public comment, okay. Thank you. Apologize for interrupting.
So board members, as, as we look through the variety of comments that we've received from the public, both speaking in favor and speaking in opposition, do you folks have any comments of us to the other board members? Brad?
Um, yes, thank you, Chairman. This is obviously a very difficult decision to make because there's a, we need to differentiate between actual violations of the business that was going on and also to differentiate between the neighbors disputes. Where we have neighbors, you know, apparently behaving badly with each other, not being very neighborly. But yet, then again, we have lots of complaints that may or may not be related to the business itself. So it's going to be kind of difficult to So it's gonna be kind of difficult to. Potentially difficult to try to differentiate between what goes on in, in somebody's um, on somebody's property. That's not, in this case, that's not related to their business use. So for instance, when I, um, when we hear things about um there being. Uh, a bonfire going on or there's people that are gathering, making noises after hours. I mean, that's, that's, to me, that's potentially. Um, somebody just enjoying their quiet enjoyment or having fun, you know, with, with their friends and relatives. You know, at their house, which has nothing to do with uh their business. So some of that seems to be following bleeding over into. And perhaps the, the business side of it. Uh, whether it is or not, and it's gonna be something that's gonna be very, very difficult. But uh, to say, well, this happened because it was. Uh, during the business hours, but it was a personal use of the property. So that's, that's one thing that we need to consider. Another thing that I think that's, that's very important um to understand is. That we as the board should not be trying to solve the problems of dysfunctional neighbors. And we should let this, um, we should just base what we're doing on facts that we have. And it's, it's, it's unfortunate that, that the neighbors. Can't get along at all. And I would say that their dysfunction is, is so great that um I believe that. That both sides. Um, are beyond rehabilitation with, with their, with their problems that they're having with their neighbors.
So Brad, let's, Brad, let, let's focus in on the issues of the special.
I'm trying, I'm trying, I'm trying to do that, but the problem that we have is that there are so many issues. That are between the people um from, I'm an emotional neighbor issues. And what we're trying to decide, which is the business. Because apparently they're so intertwined right now. That's gonna be very, very difficult to, to make a rational decision or a necessary rational decision, but making the decision that's going on. I mean, I see, um, for instance, I see um Andy, for instance, who is a member. Of various boards or not boards, but various committees in town, perhaps on a board, I don't know. And yet he seems to be using that influence peddling to push the, making an influence on the board. This board about the decisions uh that we have to make, which I think. Is, is potentially wrong. Yet then again, we have the, the neighbors who are making statements. Um, which don't, they don't seem to be able to report things in a timely manner or correctly. To the town for us to try to import or for the town to try to enforce these issues. So it seems to me that there's, there's problems with both sides. And I really wish that. Um, one, one thing that comes to mind is a letter. To, to some, to, to end this, which is a, a letter that was uh written um by um. By Beverly Zambrano. Um, who said that she's a very religious person and um. So, and um, it, it, it really resonated with me, which is do unto others as you wish them to do unto you. I'm not necessarily a, much of a um, a religious person myself. But that certainly is something that both sides. Need to look at to move forward to make this business successful or to make their neighbor, you know, to mend fences. It appears to me that neither side has shown any empathy towards each other whatsoever. And the shamelessness of, of their actions to each other as neighbors. Is, is, is causing all of this problem. And. I'm glad that tonight that. I'm not voting on this because I think we have a full board. And the only reason I say that I'm glad about this is because last time I voted against it because I thought it was. You know, I had my reasons because it was a trade shop. I didn't think it was a trade shop, but we need to. Make sure that this board protects the neighbors of a business first. And the opinions of other town members of various committees. Um, and their opinions should not slay the opinion or the board's actions. And I want to thank you for your time.
Uh, just to be clear tonight, um, yeah, Brad, you are voting member tonight, um, because um. John has had to recuse himself.
Okay.
And just, so just Mr. Chair, that's clear. And just, you know, at this point, this is the renewal, um. Of the special permit. So I would just remind the board that this is a renewal. We're going over the um. Conditions uh for the special permit and um. We should um, we're gonna have to plan on, uh, like I said, John will be recusing. Uh, I don't know if he has any questions. He could certainly ask questions as well.
Leslie?
Hmm, I'm just wondering um, how, or where the um. Where in process the um. There was, uh, there was a. God, I can't think of the terminology. Uh, this is being what litigated?
Yeah, but that, that is not part of our discussion.
No.
No. Our discussion is focusing on a renewal of the special permit. Do we go with the conditions? Do we go with less conditions, more conditions? That our focus is, right?
Okay.
Jerry, Paige, any questions, discussions amongst ourselves? Paige?
Or uh, hopefully my internet cooperates, but uh, following up on what Brad said. And what you were saying, Mr. Chair, I think it's important to look at the facts when we're hearing uh conflicting. Opinions on what's occurring or, and in my case, I would. Went back and looked at the sound measurements that we took. Um, and we, it looks like we did take some with windows open and doors open and we did listen to. Tools being used outside versus inside with everything shut. In the only instances of exceeding the ambient sound level by ten or more decibels, which is the state noise. Guideline uh was occurring when the window or doors were opened or when tools were being used outside. So it. It wasn't necessarily, we couldn't hear anything outside, but it was that that was below, if there was an increase, it was at least below ten decibels. When the windows and doors were closed and tools were being used inside. And I heard tonight that there hasn't been any change in the tools or equipment that are being used. Um, and that, that matters to me, I think. Um, it doesn't sound like there necessarily is, has been any changes in the. Sound level, um, which I completely understand is different than saying that something isn't being heard at all. I mean, we did hear things when. The doors and windows were shut, but it was below the state got a policy guideline of ten decibel increase, so. I know I, I found it important to go back and refresh my memory on that tonight.
Thank you, Paige. Uh, Jerry, did you have any thoughts?
I don't know if that helps anybody.
No, it does. You know, refreshes our memories.
Uh, yeah, yeah, Mr. Chair, yes, I do, but Brad has his hand up. I want to hear what Brad has to say.
Oh, sorry, I missed that.
No, that's okay.
But, thanks, Jerry. Um, so I believe that the special, one of the conditions of the special permit says. Um, a discernible noise. Um, to the, to the, to the neighbors, you know, the property, discernible noise that's coming out. And the discernible noise was, was, is an opinion. It's not based on decibel readings. It's not based on anything else. It's just. It just noise, noise that the, that the neighbors could hear or anybody could hear. And it's, it's, and so we, we're not in the, this board could not be in the business of. Of, of being experts on sound. I mean, although Gary probably is certainly qualified for that, but. Um, but there's certainly a, the town police is not, and I don't think um, our. Building Commissioner is equipped to do that. So it comes to the opinion of being a discernible noise. So I think we should let the whole idea of, of decibel readings like that. Um, set that aside because discernible noise is what we're talking about. Thanks, Jerry.
You're welcome, Brad. Remember, you owe me one now. All right, uh, so, yes. Uh, so back in July of twenty twenty-two, we spent two early evenings from four to five thirty-five P M roughly both days. Um, taking some sound readings while uh. The trade shop, whatever, the, the, the equipment was being used. And we went around and took readings based upon, you know, whether it was the uh, uh, chainsaw. Or the sander or the grinder. And we went and we went and took a full set of readings at the same locations each time, each piece of equipment. And to Brad's point, what we're trying to do there was just document, how loud are these things? Are they distracting, disturbing loud? One of the toughest things we had was getting in between traffic. Because the traffic on the roadway was louder than any of the sounds we heard, any, any. So that was the toughest thing. So to Brad's point, discernible noise. Um, you know, Paige brought up the fact that, yeah, we had a couple of points where, okay, it was above ten, ten decibels. But it wasn't like it was above ten about decibels and it was uh increase over the ambient. Um, for an hour and a half. I don't think that that's what they do. If you're out with a leaf blower, you could be out for an hour, an hour and a half with a leaf blower. That's loud. So there was nothing that I heard, was any of us heard or that we documented. That was overly excessive. Cause I do sound surveys for industrial clients. And that's what we look for. We look for what's loud, what's above, uh, what they consider a fence line, the sixty-five decibels. Is it continuous? Not just because it had a spike, went up and came back down. Is it continuous? We didn't find anything that was excessively loud, that would even be considered. Uh, as an operation to be done on a continuous basis for thirty, forty, sixty, eighty minutes. So as, as far as we're concerned with the sound readings we took. And putting that against sound standards and against the state guidelines. Everything looked pretty good. I'm not saying to Brad's point. A neighbor hears a noise. Maybe he knows that they're in the barn. Were they doing work or were they just doing something else in the barn? I don't know. I don't know. So I, I, I think we've, you know, to the chair's point, we get to get back to. Exactly what we do know, don't know, and we have to make. Uh, informed decisions based upon that because there's an awful lot of back and forth. This could go on for a long time. I just wanted to comment on the noise. From all the sound readings that I took back last July, things looked pretty good. I did comment that. Some of these same functions that might happen in December, January. When the temperature, let's see, July last year, the day we did it. One day was eighty-eight, one day was eighty-four degrees. You do that same function when it's twenty-five degrees, thirty-two degrees outside. That noise is going to be substantially louder. So what you hear in the winter may, for the same function may appear to be louder than it was in July or August or June. So just a comment, there's a lot of variables in this, but we cannot isolate all those variables. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thanks. To, to continue on this noise thing, I pulled up the conditions of approval from last year. And a note here, item B says noise, all noise generating activities associated with the trade shop shall be conducted within the studio. Noise levels shall be controlled to be minimally detectable outside of the studio. It didn't say absolutely no noise. It just says be minimally detectable. And then there was, you know, a bunch of other things, different conditions for other items, but we're focusing right now. It seems to be on the noise. It was something else about light emanating from the storage room windows. Mitigated by shades or light blocking devices. Uh, you've seen the package that the applicants submitted showing that the shades were down. And yet it was quite bright outside because of lights from the neighbors. And even with the shades down, it was a glow. It wasn't as if there was a light bulb coming out of the shining light out of the studio. It was simply a glow of the uh shade. So, and I think they were uh mitigated by shades. Not blacked out, but mitigated. And so my, my question to the board now is we look through. The, oh, what letter is Q? I mean, is that like the sixteen different? Items that we had there? If Q was the sixteenth letter, I don't know. Um, as we go through, are there any things that need to be changed? Made more restrictive or less restrictive?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I can't find the little hands up on mine. This is Rick Asman, the building commissioner.
Oh, sure. Go ahead, Rick. Sorry.
No, you're out of, out of public comment right now, but I'm, I'm looking at condition N. Uh, the light emanating from storage room studios along the side must be mitigated by shades or other light blocking devices. I would just suggest that you move the word shades to after light blocking. Or other devices so that there, on the next iteration of these conditions. You, you have more of an incentive to have light blocking shades rather than shades that allow light to emanate through them.
That's a good point. Thank, thank you, Rick. So it will read must be mitigated by light blocking devices or shades.
Light, right, light blocking shades or other devices. Whatever. So the light blocking is applying to both elements of the sentence.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that.
And Mr. Chair, make, uh, make one uh quick point?
Sure, if you wish.
Uh, just regarding back before we, we leave the sound, I, I would um remind the board that condition E. Sets specific hours that noise generating activities are permitted. Um, and so that also does allow for a police report if it is after those hours. And that's something that's easily documented, they see there. And then the question is, you know, the, the level maybe of noise may be subjective, but. Um, that, those timeframes are, are specific.
Does the board have any comment on that?
Um, I, I have one, one comment about that. Um, I, I, I think that perhaps um, a lot of the complaints that the, the abutters have. Is noise, uh, well, lot, lots of noise, obviously, um, at any point in time. But for them to be able to enjoy the quiet enjoyment of their property in, in terms of having. Uh, friends over and barbecues and things like that. Um, I would, I would suggest that perhaps we um limit the amount of. Time on a weekend and perhaps compromise as to uh allowing. You know, or not allowing Sunday activities. You know, in terms of the activity that's going on inside the. Uh, trade shop or in the artist, inside the artist studio. That was, that is, that is making noise.
All right, so you're, you're looking at item E. Hours indoors for noise generating activities, nine to five, Monday through Saturday, Sunday, twelve to five.
Yeah, I would, I would, um, I would eliminate the Sunday. Noise activity inside. I mean, that. In, in terms of that, that, what I'm gonna talk about the noise, admitting things is where you're using the power tools or using the things that. Are the nuisance noises. I mean, if, if, if somebody wants to. I, I, I think they have every right to be able to, you know, parade people in. To their trade shop or their, their, you know, and show, you know, this is what we do. This is our, this is our activities that we do in here. You know, and have people come in and, and show up, you know, and show off their, their property and, and what it is that they did there. I think that's. Certainly something that they should be able to do, but, but to say, well, this is how we do it by turning on a power saw. You know, or start, you know, running a chainsaw and how to, you know, how they, you know. Craft their things.
All right, so.
Could be limited.
So when you say noise generating activities. Does that include people? Are you talking machine noise?
I'm talking about machine noise. Activity related to their, their manufacturing process or their, their craft.
I'm just trying to drop this down so I don't lose it. And you're, and you don't want Sunday?
Right, because, because Sunday twelve to five is, is often a time where, you know, neighbors, people have family over.
Sure. Okay, what about Saturday?
I think Saturday is often a working day for a lot of people. I mean, most businesses are, are working Saturdays.
All right.
Mr. Chair, the applicants have their hand raised. I don't know if you should take a.
I, I, I see that. I'm just trying to figure out what my question would be of them.
One, one, one more question. Have we closed the public discussion? So they, we're not going to get any more comments from the butters or the, or the applicants.
We have closed the public comment portion of the meeting.
So, so we're not going to hear comments from, from the butters or the, or the applicants unless there is a question that's asked of them. Is that correct?
And that's, that's where I'm going. I'm going to ask them a question to understand if these two adjustments, assuming there's no more adjustments, are, work with them. So before, before I go and ask the applicant this question, is there anything else we would like to adjust on the list of conditions? Leslie, I can see that hand wave, but you need to be on mute.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
I certainly can.
Okay, so my neighborhood just had a power outage, so I was like kicked off out of the meeting for about five minutes, power's back on. So I didn't hear what the first thing, the first change was.
All right. So this, this came from Rick, our building commissioner, and it's item N. And he wants to suggest that light emanating from the storage room studios along the side of the barn must be mitigated by light blocking shades or other devices from dusk to dawn. In other words, mitigated by shades, he's moving the shades to a light blocking shade.
Yeah.
Just, just to clarify that. The second item Brad is suggesting, item E, hours indoors for machine noise generating activities, nine to five, Monday through Saturday. Nothing on Sunday. Those are the two adjustments that we have commented on so far. Is there anything else that the board wants to comment on, adjust or otherwise comment? I'm not seeing or hearing anything. Is that right? All these faces staring at me. So I want to go back to my phrasing of these two items to Donna and Andy using light blocking shades instead of shades or light blocking and removing Sunday from the list of indoor noisy activities. Donna and Andy, is that is that acceptable? Is that something we can have you guys live with?
If this is, if this is what it takes for Brad to feel like this is a comfortable setting, that's fine. I'm concerned about the light blocking shades. One of the challenges was to find a shade that diminished the light to a point where it wasn't bothersome. It was like every other house in the neighborhood. And yet allowed us to be able to not have to open the shades and close the shades every time we walk into that space. We quite often just don't turn our lights on. When we are there during the day, we just walk through and grab something that we need. It's a storage area. And it, it will be a little bit more of a challenge, not impossible, but a little bit more of a challenge. I'll happily replace those. As far as the Sunday work, I'm very concerned about the precedent that you're setting that somehow these accessory trade shops or, or accessory use businesses should be restricted on weekends when a whole lot of the people that are applying for these are weekenders only because of their, their, their work jobs. I happen to now be retired, and I don't think that's quite as big an issue. I'm a little concerned also that our neighbors won't be able to tell the difference between what is a quiet activity, sanding with, by hand, or filing by hand, or painting and shuffling about in the studio, and what they would consider to be onerous and bothersome. I'm not completely convinced that, that this is a necessary thing. If we're loading or unloading artwork for a show on a Sunday, is that a problem? It's a pretty quiet activity. I just worry that our neighbors will not be able to differentiate and that this is just another avenue to chip away at our freedom of use.
Now, can I add something to?
Please.
Yeah, I'm, I'm concerned too. I, you know, I don't, I didn't really notice that any of the complaints were logged on Sundays. I don't think there's any fact upon which we're kind of basing this, this jump to just take away the Sunday hours. They're very limited as they are, as are, as are the weekday hours. We are very, you know, respectful about how we use the studio and try to keep all sound, you know, inside. And again, I, I just, the neighbor's ability to complain relentlessly and in collusion with one another, even when there's no factual basis of the complaints, shouldn't be a reason to take things away from us if we're not violating the conditions of the permit. I think that's a really, a really dangerous precedent for the board to go down.
Well, thank, thank you for your, your comments on that. Now, Mr. McKay, he's your attorney?
Yes, he is.
So I would like to hear if he has anything to comment on here, Mr. McKay?
I, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually don't. In addition to what Donna and Andy just said, I think that they are correct that in the absence of any documented violations, further limiting their use doesn't, doesn't seem fair. They, they, they received a permit from the board. They have honored those conditions that neither any of the police reports nor any of the building inspectors reports suggest that there's been a violation. And I think that should be the basis upon which the board makes its decisions, including any decisions related to to the modification of the permit going forward.
Thank you. Thank you. Is, well, that, that brings up an interesting discussion that I think the board should have some more about this item E, about excluding Sunday or not. The board, can you weigh in on that? Jerry, what do you think?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I don't technically have a problem with them working on the Sunday.
Thank you. Paige?
Similar to Jerry, I also don't have a problem. I think if the, our condition already says that noise levels need to be controlled to be minimally detectable outside the studio. So assuming that that is the case, then I don't see any problem allowing them to work from noon to five on Sunday.
Leslie, any comments? Hit your mute button.
All right. No, I don't have any problem with it.
With them twelve to five on Sunday?
Right.
Okay. So Brad, I, I think I know your opinion. You would like to see Sunday not happening?
Well, the, the reason that I'm offering that is, is try to appease the butters somewhat, because what we have is we have two sides which, which are, are denying. One, one side says they're, they've done nothing wrong ever. And the other side says they're doing things wrong all the time. And it's been, it's my opinion that I have, come up with over the years of my life, that when you have two, two opposite stories such as that, that there's two conditions. One of them is a complete liar, or that somewhere between the two sides, the truth lies. And it's been my observation that the truth does not always lie in the exact middle.
Okay, what we're looking at.
So what I'm, so what I'm thinking is that as, as trying to, instead of shutting the the noise level, which is the issue that goes on, instead of shutting it down completely, shutting them down, the, the butters down completely over this issue, I think that we should offer an olive branch to the butters and say that, yes, they're, they're not going to make machine noises on Sundays.
But Brad, the, the issue is from all the complaints that were lodged, none of them were done on a Sunday.
But what you have to understand is that you will be finding them now, moving forward, because the people, the butters have not been formal, have not been filing the complaints properly. They have not been filing them in paper like, like they're, they're required to do. And they, they thought that they were, could do a log of things and, and, and it would work out. But that's, I mean, I'm willing to go with what the board says on this. But it seems to me that there is activity that, that's going on that's not being reported or that's not being picked up or that they are, that is happening, that is related to the, that is potentially related to the business. And that I don't think that either side is innocent on this. And I think that just trying to have some common ground, you know, and a common understanding of what is, what is right and what is wrong with how you treat your neighbors, or when it comes to respect the noise, that you should say that, hey, maybe Sunday, you shouldn't be doing it.
All right. So you've heard from the, from, from the applicant, and you've heard the various board members' comments. Is there anything else, any of the other conditions that we need to adjust? I'm not hearing anything. And so what I would like to do is have two motions. The first one is to approve the conditions of approval for another year, accepting item E. I want to have a separate vote on item E. And so if we will entertain a motion for all the conditions of approval, this is to, to allow them a one-year extension on their special permit for, oh, item N, we had that adjustment of words too. So so we would have that. And then we will have a separate meet, a separate vote for item N and item E. And I think ask Brian a comment here, can I close the public hearing now? And then we vote, or do we vote before we close the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend you take a motion to close the public hearing. You had already ended public comment. But you could have taken more evidence as you did by asking questions. But at this point, if you don't anticipate any more evidence, I would close the public hearing by motion and vote. And then you could move into your substantive votes on the decision.
Thank you. So you heard town council there. I would like a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I get a second? Jerry, second? So since we're remote, we get, need to do a roll call vote? Paige?
Yep.
Leslie?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
And I'm, yes, as well. So now I would like to get some substantive motions made. To simplify it, I would like to have a motion to continue all of the conditions, excepting N and E for another year, and then we'll vote on N and E separately.
Sure moved.
Do I get a second?
Second.
Leslie, seconds?
Mr. Chair, before we go further, I'd like to ask Attorney Winter a question, if I may, on this.
If you wish.
Yes. Just curious on this, where it's a renewal for the findings. Would it be, should the board go through the findings and establish that they remain the same as in the original special permit with the exception noticed about the, the lights? Or what would you recommend for this, for tidy?
Yes, in, in essence, it's a new special permit, so I think it should be supported by the findings if you want to make any changes. Same way you did with conditions, you don't have to necessarily do it in the same order. So we don't have to stop what you're doing now in order to go back to the findings. If the findings are adequate as written and you feel there's no material changes that need to be reflected, you can simply adopt them. But you should have a vote on the record that it is your will to adopt them and repeat them in your new decision. Or if you want to make changes, handle it accordingly. And to repeat that, because I'm, I'm seeing some blank faces. The decision that's going to come out of this process is going to be a new special permit decision. So it's not going to be one sentence that says the decision was renewed for one year. It's a new special permit. It has new rights under forty-eight seventeen, et cetera. And so it should be as full featured as your original decision. That doesn't mean you have to go through and make your findings all over again. If you're satisfied with your findings, as you did them the first time, you can simply adopt them, incorporate them by reference.
That's, that's very good, Brian. I had not thought that through that way. Thank you. So how, how's the, the will of the board here? Do we want to note our findings as they existed in our document from before? Do we want to do that at this point? Jerry?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, I would agree. I hadn't looked at it that way, and I'm glad the attorney stated it the way he did. Yes, because that's similar to us saying it's a renewal without saying it's a renewal. We're just agreeing with what we stated last year when we issued the first permit with a couple of exceptions, and those were the light and detectable noise. I think I said that right.
Yeah, so we had six findings from last year.
Would you like me to pull them up, Mr. Chair, and I can share them on the screen?
If, if you wanted to do that, or I could do it, your choice.
Oh, if you have it, I'll let you.
You want me to try? No, you better do it. I got fourteen different documents open here.
Fair enough.
And I'll get confused.
Okay, can everybody see that?
Yeah, scroll up a little bit. The findings are above that, Bill.
There we go. There it goes, coming in. There we go. Okay.
So they had been operating, the first one, as we noted, a year ago, they had been operating the artist's studio for about six years. And they included artistic work in the barn, a variety of techniques, including the use of power tools. They also had done work both in the foyer and in the yard and a variety of techniques using power tools. Now, if we're going to do findings this, for this year, we don't have artistic work in the yard. It's all been curtailed into the barn. And there have been complaints from the neighbors with noise and lights, the odor and outside And there have been complaints from the neighbors with noise and lights, the odor and outside storage. We have not heard any of that. And the, and then the ZBA site visits of a year ago. So if we're going to make new findings, I think we need to edit some of the year ago findings to, to indicate what has been happening in that subsequent year.
So number C, or I should say letter C, I mean, is the first one, like you said, that's a good point. I just, it, it, in the, in the barn. Remove the yard. D remains the same. I, the thing that we might, uh, do is find that there have been no um, violations by the building commissioner. If you wanted to.
Right. So do you want to edit this on the fly, or do we want to just paraphrase it and you take care of it after hours?
You, you can, well, you can paraphrase it if you want, but I don't think there's that, is there that much after D? I mean, I could.
Well, item, item A for approximately seven years now.
Right?
And item C, as you commented, we need to correct. And abutting neighbors regarding noise and light, odors, I haven't seen any odor complaints this year. And outside storage, I haven't seen any issues with that. And I haven't seen any complaints of public events. So the item D needs to be edited. Item E. I don't think we've looked at anything for any of their new chemicals they might be using for materials. So I don't think we even need item E. And item F, sure, that was.
I was documenting it.
That's just the summary of what we saw a year ago.
Uh, Mr. Chair, can we modify that to say that the applicant has stated there are no new, there's no new tools or equipment being used that weren't?
Yes.
Uh, being used when we did the sound check. Thank you.
Yep.
New, so at applicant, no new tools. Added. Okay, I'll add that one as a finder.
And then another finding would be, I think, I think you might have mentioned it, Bill, about no recorded violations.
Yeah, okay, I will make that. All right. And now if the board likes, we can go over the, um, the, um, conditions that are necessary for, um, determining that a, a special, uh, an application qualifies for special permit. In this case, as Attorney Winner said, it can, can adopt it by reference. If you want to run through it, we can. And if there's changes, we could do that too, but.
Yeah, I don't think there's any changes to this section. Yeah, so that's, that's fine. And so now the findings we have found. And now I want to go back to that vote. Did we have a motion on the table for accepting A through Q without N and E at this point?
Not yet. We didn't.
Okay, can I get such a motion?
So would it be, um, I make a motion to approve the uh, special permit to allow a trade shop, um, artist studio at, uh, one twenty-three Summer Street, Maynard, Massachusetts. Given the above findings that I'm not seeing, right, the find.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and the, uh, conditions. Um, what is it? A through?
Q is our last one.
A through Q. And is that where we're, um, changing E and N?
I want to have a separate vote on E and N.
So excluding items E and N.
To be voted on later.
To be voted on later.
Jerry, sorry, seconds. Sorry, Brad, I didn't see your hand fast enough.
That's okay.
And so let's do a roll call on that. Paige?
Yep.
Leslie?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So that's, that's under control. Now let's look at item N. And we had a suggestion from the building commissioner to change the positioning of the word shades. So that would read light emanating from the storage room, studio windows. I think that should, I think that's another change. We should have storage room windows along the side of the barn must be mitigated by light blocking shades or other devices from dusk to dawn.
Um, for what, what can, condition N, right?
Yeah, we're reading condition N edited.
Right, but do we have it the way, and you want it to read, right, the way we have it now was, um, uh, mitigation shall consist of light blocking, um, shades or other devices.
Right, and there's another adjustment here. First line, the word studios, I believe, should be windows. Light emanating from the storage room windows.
Got it. Okay, got it.
All right. So do I get a motion to accept condition N?
Make a motion to accept condition N.
As edited.
As edited.
Do I get a second? Jerry seconds?
Second.
All right, let's do a roll call. Paige?
Yep.
Leslie?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Brad? You're on mute, Brad.
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes as well. So condition N as edited is in the, in the, in the, uh, whatever we're talking about now. Conditions of approval. So let's, let's look at item E. Item E, hours indoors for machi, I want to add the word machine noise generating activities. Nine to five P M, Monday through Saturday. Sunday, twelve to five. And so I'm reading it exactly the way it is with machine noise generating activities.
Machine noise generating. Okay, got it.
So a motion to accept the edited version? Jerry, Jerry, and do I get a second? Leslie seconds? All right, go ahead. Paige, were you saying something?
Oh, I, I just missed, uh, that it was Leslie. I thought I petered in the punch, but I guess not.
Sorry.
I'm still trying to, uh, um, decode that sentence. Parse, it's a, that's an odd sentence if you try to parse it, but I sorry, it's the teacher in me.
Yeah, all right. So are we ready for a vote on this one? Paige?
Yeah.
Leslie?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Brad?
No.
And I'm a yes. So that, that passes as well. So one, one last item on this extension or this new special permit is the date that it's effective. And I would suggest that's another motion to make this effective, the date of the expiration of the existing special permit.
I, I make a motion that the, this, um, permit be in effect.
Becomes effective, yeah.
It becomes effective and the date that the existing permit expires.
And it's for one year.
For one year.
Do I get a second?
Second.
All right, any comments? No comments. Paige?
Yeah.
Leslie?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
All right, and I'm a yes too. So do I need any more votes on this, Bill? Am I all set?
I think you're good. We've done our findings. We've had a roll call vote. And, um, we've established the effective date of the permit, and I think that's all we need.
All right. So I think that concludes this portion of the zoning board. And now we need to look at the next item, if I can find it here.
Uh, next item is, can you get it, Mr. Chair, you want to pull?
Uh, I think I've got it. So assuming that the next applicant is there. This is a variance application filed by Michael Ahern of eleven,
Yes.
Eleven Amory Ave. The subject property, eleven Amory Ave, is located within the zoning district S one. Per section five, one, four, the Maynard zoning bylaws, the petitioner is requesting a variance to do something with a screened porch. Now, how do I get that to read? To build a screened-in porch on a structure over the allowed coverage by one point one percent. The applicant is asking to increase the coverage by an additional one point four percent. And so I'm befuddled by the numbers already. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
What, what is one point one percent and what is the additional one point four percent?
Yeah, I think, Mr. Chair, I think, um, the staff report is probably a, a better. Let me, um, share a screen with a staff report and it kind of lays it out. What the petitioner has, uh, right now, um, fifteen percent is the maximum building coverage in the S one zoning district. Uh, currently, um, there's sixteen, a little over sixteen percent provided. That's the current situation. So it's a non-conforming structure on a conforming lot currently. Uh, they're asking for an increase of an additional one point four percent, which would bring the coverage up to seventeen point four percent. So right now, um, the, the, the additional increase that is being requested is from one point four percent. Uh, I see, uh, the, uh, building commissioner is raising his hand, so he's more familiar with this than I am, so it may be, uh.
Yeah, please, please, Rick, I mean, this, this has got me confused with the percentages, but maybe you can shed light on it.
Uh, yeah, there's, there's no record, um, of this uh, property ever receiving a special permit or variance in the past. It had made application for a variance, uh, for an addition off the, the same portion of the house in terms of setback at one point, when I think the previous building commissioner had a different view of how to treat a corner lot. And so I'm not sure when, uh, the house was allowed to increase in size, but the sixteen point one percent represents a non-compliant structure, not a pre-existing non-conforming structure. And that's where the difference is because, you know, normally you might allow an increase in non-conformity for a pre-existing non-conforming structure because of levels of protection afforded that for a one- or two-family house under the zoning act. But this is a non-compliant structure that cannot go down that path without the granting of a variance. And so you need to, uh, to grant the applicant's desires, he would have to meet the criteria laid out for a variance and not a special permit. Questions?
I have a question. Um, so what, what is, uh, what makes it non, um, compliant as opposed to non-conforming?
Right, uh.
I don't understand.
The zoning act, the zoning act makes provision for, uh, pre-existing homes that fall into non-conformity because of changes in the zoning while they're in existence. So such as, uh, you know, any house built prior to nineteen fifty-one in Maynard had no setback requirements. So we may have a lot of houses that are only ten feet off a lot line instead of fifteen, but that incursion into the setback was made prior to a time when zoning made that. Put that into non-conformity. Um, so it was conforming when it was constructed, but as the zoning of the town was adopted and then altered, um, you had various structures, um, fault become non-conforming. Uh, you probably have a lot of structures along Thompson, the side of Thompson Street that was made in S District, even though the lots were developed prior to nineteen fifty-one and are probably more dense than the fifteen percent that we allow in an S one district. So in this case, this house was built after nineteen fifty-one, after the adoption of the zoning act, and after the adoption of those regulations that said that there was no more than fifteen percent of this property that was supposed to be built upon. But at some point, it was allowed to be built upon or expanded to this percentage. And so it's considered non-compliant and is not entitled to a the expansion of a pre-existing non-conformity by special permit. You view it, you view the structure as a non-compliant structure as opposed to a non-conforming structure. So any increase to its existing non-compliance would require a variance.
Wow, I'm glad you're here, Rick. That was, that was an excellent explanation. I, I even understand it. Really appreciate that.
So when was this property built?
Uh, I believe the was, I, I can go to the assessors. I believe that the original structure was done in the sixties, early seventies.
Okay, so it was well after fifty-one.
Yes.
And that structure as it was built is the original structure, or was it added on to?
It appears to have been added on to at some point, and I don't know if I don't know, I, I, I don't think this, the current owner added on to it. It was done previously, and it may have been done just in spite of its denial for a variance.
Okay. Great. All right, so that's the preamble. So where is the petitioner? Can he explain what he wants to do?
Yes, my name is Mike Ahern. I'm right here.
Good.
I am, uh, I'm lucky to basically add in a small porch to the back of my home. Um, and I know the, the percentages are kind of miniscule from one point one to one point four. Um, but it would make, mean a, a great deal to my family, um, as well as, uh, my mother, who I have on weekends. She's elderly, of course, and, uh, she likes being outside, doesn't like being inside and uh, just trying to basically, you know, do the right thing by her as well. Um, this is not a big structure. Uh, I don't have any additional structures that have been added to the house. If there was at one time, I'm not aware of it. Uh, I don't have any additional structures that have been added to the house. If it was at one time, I'm not aware of it. Um, but the house is all, you know, original aside from all the updates I've done. Um, but uh, this twelve by twelve that I'm asking for, for the back of a house. Is not going to um, impair or impact or. Uh, disrupt any neighbors or anything like that. Um. I, I'm hoping that, uh, you know, it's, it's not going to be too much to ask for. Thank you.
So. Board members. Now, John, I assume you're participating in this one.
That's a yes.
Any questions of board members to the applicant?
Um, how close is it to um, neighbors? Property lines?
Here, I'll pull it up, Leslie.
All these properties are relatively small as we know, and they're all very similar in size.
It's a, it, it's the basically a ten thousand square foot lot. The house was built in sixty two. So if there are no additions to it, it means that the house was built noncompliant.
Yeah.
So to answer Leslie's question, if you see all those setback arrows.
Yeah.
It fits within the setback envelope.
So it's really just a matter of cover. Yeah.
The setback envelope that they're showing here is. Different from how I've been interpreting our setback requirements. So what you, what you're, what you have in the proposed, so they're showing us typical setback line. And on the south side, they're showing a setback line of thirty feet for the, the house and anything added to it. Um, that's not how we interpret, uh, that's not how I've been interpreting corner lots. I have interpreted corner lots as having two front lines and two sidelines and no rear line. And this is to some advantage for, for people who are adding on to their house on a corner lot. Because you only have to deal where you're seeing a thirty foot setback on this drawing. There's actually only required to be a fifteen foot setback. So the porch is not intruding into the setbacks on that side.
Would you say that this is a de minimis case?
No. Well, first of all. Is, is the shed in, does the shed exist currently?
Yes, it does.
And is the shed part of the calculations? Of the um, coverage?
Currently, right now, yes.
I see. And do you know that under my interpretation of our current zoning bylaws that. If this shed had been placed within the last ten years, I would ask for it to be removed.
Wasn't aware of that, but uh, it was here when I bought the home.
No, I, I, I understand that. And because of a previous building commissioner who. Kind of looked at zoning in his own way for twenty five years, I have a lot of sheds all over the place in town, so. It's not, it's not a big deal. It's, it's perhaps a bartering coin for the uh, zoning board of appeals though. So the only thing I, I see problematic with this is you. If the, the removal of the shed does not bring the house into compliance with the coverage, is that correct?
That appears so.
Okay, so, you know. You're, to the board, you're just dealing with the coverage issue. There is not a setback issue here.
Correct.
And I'll stick around if you have any other questions.
Appreciate it, Rick. Paige, any questions?
Um, I think I heard Rick say we need to still make the same findings, or maybe it was built for a variance. That we would normally make, I think, that are in section four of the staff report. Um, and I didn't necessarily see those addressed in the petitioner's statement, so it's wondering if perhaps somebody can speak to that. I don't have any issues with the request, but I think it would help us make our findings if we could have that clarified a little bit.
All right, so for the, the benefit of the applicant. The variance criteria. There's three big issues here. The permit granting authority must find that owing to the circumstances relating to the soil. Conditions, the shape or topography of the land or structures. And especially affecting such land or structures, but not generally affecting the zoning district. Item two, that a literal enforcement of the provisions of the bylaw. Would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner. Note, hardship is not a personal nature thing, but is connected to the property. And three, that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. And without nullifying or substantially derogating the intent of the bylaw. And now he puts it on the screen. Thanks, Bill. So those three things are items that we need to find. To be able to grant this, a- as you heard from Rick, it's not a special permit, it's a variance. Because of the history of the property and the age of the structure and so on. And so. Adding it, the, the uh. The percentages. You're what, two percent, three percent, two, no, two and a half percent over. The coverage for that zoning. District. And so to make that work. We need to find something specific. To that property. Soil conditions, shape or topography. That it would involve substantial hardship. And that relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and, and mod, and, and derogating. Yeah, that's the big word, derogating the ordinance or bylaw. So that's what we have to debate and argue and think about and get some input from you as to how you rationalize these three items to help us along our way. You have any thoughts? Anything, Mike?
Uh, I, I don't have a lot to add. It's um, you know, again, it's. It's something that I, I, I would, in the thirty two years I've been at the house, something I've always thought about. And it's just something that I, I would, I would like to do for my mother. Uh, quite frankly, and um. Uh, again, with, without, without uh, sound like a broken record, uh. This is just something that is not really going to impact. I don't, I don't believe anybody, neighbors or anything like that. I, I think it, in most cases, won't be seen. My backyard is entirely fenced. And uh, I, I don't think it'll impact anybody in, in any shape or form.
That, and that, that I'm, I might agree with you, but that's only one out of the three conditions that we need to find. Brad, you had your hand up?
Yes, thank you. Um. I believe that the um, right now they have a patio out there and um, the house, from what I can tell is a. Is built on a slab. And I don't think that the um, green porch. That they would be installing would be something that would be structural enough. To um, consider that as an addition on a house where other people might have built. Um. Additions that turned, you know, a patio into a, you know, into a screen porch, into a three season porch, into a. Into a, a, a room, heated room, and on and on. Um, I think that this um, particular structure. Um, if you look at the roof lines and everything like that on it, that would stay a very small. Um. Porch, you know, um, screen porch. You know, maybe, um, I don't see it easily being a heated space or anything like that, so I think that. Um, in terms of the topography or the various land structures, I don't see it being easily. Uh, expanded. To becoming um, a much larger house.
That's correct.
John, Jerry, any questions, comments?
Yeah, um, Paul, so I, I agree with Brad, but the one I always get stuck on is number two. How do we? How would we phrase it if we, as a substantial hardship, because I'm not. Seeing it in this one.
That's our challenge.
Yeah.
I, I think that's, if I might, uh, sorry. Speaking my turn.
No, go ahead, Brad.
Um. There was a, the applicant did say that the um, the need for having a screen porch. Is so they can enjoy the outdoors because of the mosquito population. And the various disease that is associated with mosquitoes and ticks and things like that. So I think this would be a um, would be remediating a potential hardship. Um, to someone's health, especially an elderly person. Uh, who would not be able to tolerate, you know, such antigens into their body from, from nature. Going to be an ongoing issue as, as. I moves on, I believe.
This was the real reason to, to put this porch in the first place is because of that. Uh, ticks and mosquitoes, which we have had some issues with in the past. And really don't want them anymore.
Yeah. Jerry, any comments?
No, I, I agree uh. With where the petitioner is coming from, and I agree with uh. You know, Brad's uh, im- impression of, of doing it too. Uh, you know, one is not going to become, you know, I don't believe over time, an extra room on the, on the house. I don't think that's going to happen. Uh, but I do see that in number two, uh, what the hardship is, I do agree. If you want to sit outdoors. Um. It's hard many times. I can't sit outdoors where I am right here in Maynard. Not after, when dusk arrives, you get eaten alive, can't do it. So I, 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 I see doing this, it's small enough. I do not see it having an impact on. You know, the neighborhood at all. That's my two cents.
Thanks. Paige?
Yeah, I mean, I think the hardship. Needs to be connected to the property, not necessarily personal, but I think there is a case to be made that it wouldn't. Preclude, the hardship could be without this, they would not be, uh, they're, they couldn't enjoy the property. Or they're, uh, because of the presence of mosquitoes or ticks, but just to. Dial in the hardship argument a little more.
Leslie?
Um. Yeah, I don't have a problem with it. Um. So with the number, with. The first thing about the soil condition, shape or tobac, topography of the land. Um. What is it? Just the fact that it's a small lot and then. I don't. I didn't know what our finding on that was.
We haven't yet.
Yeah, the lot is conforming. It's, it's over ten thousand square feet, which is the.
Um.
Size for the district.
But to, to play on it a little bit, Leslie. It says land or structures.
Mm-hmm.
And the structure got trapped in the zoning. Because of when it was built. Is that something we can play on to make it? Uh, a finding? Whereas if, if it, if it had been before the zoning. Then we're now looking at the variance criteria, we're looking at a special permit criteria.
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead, Rick. Am I getting in trouble?
You're not getting in trouble with me. I, I've been watching zoning boards for over thirty years now, so. Um, but to try to help you out, we're. With what you're trying to do here. In terms of the uniqueness of uh, the property owing to soil shape or topography. I mean, it's the same lot as all the other lots in this particular area, but it's also true that. Uh, the groundwater and soils preclude there being basements in this area. So you do have a requisite and. Anybody who lives on Mockingbird would understand this too. Uh, you have high water table, which is contributing to your mosquito population in the area. You have large conservation areas that are owned by the town that are uh, wetlands. And because of the particular soil conditions. Here, the person is restricted in how much space they can generate on property. Um. Now, you know, that falls into the argument for the screen porch too, and if you're worried about expansion of the house, you condition it to. No more than a three season room. Um, but a- anyway, I'm just trying to help you out with the uniqueness element.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I missed on the no basement. And, and the town fostering all sorts of mosquitoes.
Rest assured, if I may say, uh, the three season porch is as far as we're going to go in that room. That is going to be it.
Yeah, and, and in fifty years from now. Um, we want to have that. Right, but the next, the next property owner at that point. Will, you know, because you get creep, you know, you get porch creep. And we've seen that over the years in, in several of the zoning cases where the three season becomes a four season, then becomes heated and becomes part of the house. And so we would want to put that in our. Um. Criteria that it stays a three season.
Understood.
So we have something for number one. Do we have anything for number two? And that's where I think the, the protection against mosquitoes came in, is that right?
Yes.
And then number three. Um. I, I think we can argue that that's reasonable as well. Right? I'm looking for somebody to talk here, besides me.
Yes, it seems like a, like a small change.
All right, so we've, we've got this. Uh, explained, we have some ideas as to what the findings might be. Do we have anybody on the, on the Zoom call here that wants to speak in favor of this?
See.
Hello?
Oh, wait, we have a David Mancini. Uh. Mr. Chair, I'll unmute Mr. Mancini.
Mr. Mancini?
Yes, hello.
There we go, okay.
So I'm an adjacent neighbor uh, to this property and. I personally don't see it impacting me in any negative way whatsoever for my family. Uh, I can barely. See him, my address is eleven, uh, it's thirteen Amory Ave, he's at eleven. I can barely see into his backyard to begin with. So any structure that was there would not. Be a hindrance to, to me or anybody else in my family.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else want to speak in favor of this application?
Yep, Ryan here now. Hello?
Yeah, who, who do we have here?
Hello, we have, we have a phone number.
What is it, five oh eight?
Okay. Five oh eight, um. Zero two four zero.
Yep, I got it.
State, state your name and your address.
Yeah, Maurice Richardson. I go by Chris. It's sixty five Brooks Street, which is directly behind Mr. Ahern's house. And I see absolutely no problem with what he's, he is proposing at all.
Hey, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Richardson, could you repeat the ad? Mr. Richardson, could you repeat the address? I couldn't get that.
Yeah, sixty-five Brooks. It's right on the corner of Brooks and Jethro.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak in favor of this application? Does anybody want to speak in opposition to it? It's awful quiet out there. I appreciate that. So. Board members, any questions of either the applicant or the people speaking in favor? Good. So then if that's the case, I'm thinking about closing the public comment period. Is that reasonable? Any, any issues with that? All right, so I'm closing the public comment period. Now we get to deliberate. I think we've already done a lot of that deliberation with our findings and so forth. Just wanted to confirm that we have for item one on the variance criteria. That because of the limited basement issues, you can't have a basement, high water table. That is unique to this area, this property. And also that the property was built after zoning. So now you have some sleight of hand that got that extra percent or so over the minimum or maximum. And item two. What was item two now? That was the mosquitoes?
Yes, item two is mosquitoes, Mr. Chair.
The town mosquitoes. And item three. Um, we don't see any substantial detriment to the public good or derogating from the bylaw. Is that right?
Yes, it was a small change. I would use the word de minimis. But if that was. If that clears with Rick's, um, description.
All right. So now the question is, what do we do next? And I think we closed the public meeting so we can have the vote. Is that right?
Yes, we closed the hearing.
Hearing, excuse me, public hearing.
And then our, um, the vote would be that we've, uh, uh, considered the uh, findings of the, uh, board for the variance and then a vote to, uh, a vote on the actual application.
All right. So, do I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I get a second?
Second.
All in favor. So let's, let's go. Paige?
Yeah.
Leslie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Does Brad vote on this one or is he?
Nope, Brad is not.
I just put in my two cents worth, that's all.
And, and I'm, I'm in favor of it as well. And so now the question is. Do we have any more discussion? Do we, Bill, do you have all the findings noted?
I have, I have the findings, um, and, uh, Mike, we will, um, what I'll do, I'll draft up the board's decision, uh, take me a few days, um.
We got to vote first.
You got to vote first, Bill.
Oh, oh, sorry, misunderstood.
You got to wait for Paul to give you your cue.
So. I'd like somebody to make the motion to approve this with the criteria that it remains a three-season room.
All right, I make, uh, a motion to grant the, uh, petition for a variance uh, of eleven Amory Ave and Maynard, uh, to build a screen porch increasing the overall coverage from one point one percent to one point four percent, um.
No, that's not right. It's an additional, it's an additional one point four percent.
Oh, 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 uh, huh, okay, um. To adding an additional one point four percent coverage, uh, oh, and that, um, given that, uh, um, well, for one thing, that, that, uh, it remain a screened-in porch. And not.
Three season.
Uh, I'm sorry, a three-season screened-in porch. Um, and that, um, this isn't, uh, get, this is given the, uh, findings as previously stated.
Excellent. Do I get a second? Jerry seconds. All right, any further comment? I'm not hearing any. Paige?
Yeah.
Leslie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Brad? No, he doesn't vote.
I'm staying.
And I'll say yes. Now, Bill, it's up to you to describe when happens what.
Okay, I will draft up the decision. Um, it has to be recorded with the clerk and there's an appeal period of twenty days uh, from the time it's recorded. Um, I didn't, I, I, uh, didn't have your email for some reason on the application. So typically we email it to you. Um, that's usually how I communicate. Um, but if you, um, if you email me, uh, or OMS, that would be good. We should have it anyway. Anyway, we will email you the decision. If we can't do that, we'll, we'll snail mail it to you. But from, um, the day that it's recorded with the, the clerk, uh, there's a twenty-day appeal period and then you can, um, if there's no appeal, you can just go right to building permits from there.
Very good, Bill.
Figure about a week, figure, it should be under a week that takes me to draft it and have it signed. Usually I'm, I'm pretty quick, but you never know.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Appreciate that.
Great. So our next item on the agenda is to close the meeting. We're done, right? Anything else on the agenda?
Uh, we have nothing else on the agenda, Mr. Chair.
Good. Do I get a motion to close the meeting?
I'm moved.
Do I get a second? All right.
Press call me.
So Paige, are we, are we allowed to close the meeting?
Yeah, please.
Leslie?
Yes, yes.
John?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Brad doesn't vote and I'll close the meeting as well.
It's been fun, folks.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks, Rick.
Bye, everybody.
That was the next year.
Yeah.
All right.